Mayor City Council meeting of March 10th, 2025. Madam Clerk, the role please.
Mayor Salvia is absent. Mayor Protem Bixson.
Here.
Hauser.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
King.
Here.
Sage.
Here.
Trent.
Here.
Would you please all rise and join us with a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody, I would say, to the first day of spring, hopefully. First, we have public comments, scheduled, non-scheduled. We have our community partner presentation from the Director of Career Readiness from Rochester Community Schools, Karen. Very welcome, Karen.
Good evening. Thank you so much for inviting me to present today. I do have a short little video to showcase career and technical education and career readiness at Rochester Community Schools. So Jeremy promises me this is going to be.
I'm excited to share an incredible update about our career and technical education programs. At Rochester Community Schools, we're committed to preparing students for the future, and our CTE programs are the heart of this mission. We offer 13 state-approved programs that range from business administration and management to medical careers. These programs aren't just about classroom learning. They encompass four core components that ensure comprehensive education and practical experience. First, classroom instruction. Here, students gain program-specific technical skills, career-ready practices, and essential academic knowledge. It's all about building a solid foundation. Next, laboratory learning. This is where the magic happens. Students engage in hands-on, project-based learning that brings their classroom knowledge to life. Then, there's work-based learning. We connect students with employers, both in and out of the classroom, providing invaluable real-world experience. This means internships, job shadowing, and more real, career-oriented interactions. And finally, student leadership. Through career and technical student organizations, students develop employability skills and participate in events and competitions that prepare them for the professional world. Our teachers are industry experts with over 4,000 hours of experience in their fields. They bring real-world expertise that enhances our students' learning experience. In the 2024-25 school year alone, 3,157 students participated in a CTE class. That's up by 530 students from the previous year. And the best part? They have the opportunity to earn industry-recognized credentials, setting them on the path to success. So let's continue to support and expand these incredible programs. Together, we can shape the future, one student at a time. Thank you for your unwavering commitment to our students' success.
Thanks. Thank you. So I hope that really encapsulated in two minutes career and technical education at Rochester Community Schools. I'm the Director of Career Readiness and CTE, and I serve about 14,000 students, K through 12, with programming to help them to become career-ready when they graduate after their 12 years. Currently, at the three high schools, we have 13 CTE programs, and I'm just going to run through some of the numbers on this little CTE by the numbers. That does provide 3,157 students with this career and technical education certifications, work-based learning, and so on. That's about 65% of our students currently go through these programs when they get to the high school level, which is really great, and it is continuing to grow. I think that growth is attributed to the fact that the state is very cognizant of this is needed, and our students really need to figure out what success looks like after high school. And it's not just necessarily the four-year degree. Could be a two-year degree. It could be trades, apprenticeships, or even going into the military. So we try to expose our students to that. We do have career and college nights that we have invited the city to come to, to share careers and job opportunities at that event, which happens in the fall every year. And we have a plethora of field trips and opportunities for people of the community to engage with our students. So that's something that I want to talk about, is the engagement with work-based learning that we have. So I'm just going to switch to the next slide, which talks about something that we started in the last year with our partners at the fire department, Rochester Hills and Rochester's Fire Department. And we had three students that were dual-enrolled at OCC for a semester, and they went through the EMT I and the EMT II program at the OCC campus. And we were able to present, our last board meeting at Rochester Community Schools, a certificate for the National Registered EMT License that Elia Tascow received. And she's now currently at the Rochester Fire Department, and she's there working 15 hours a week alongside all the firefighters and EMTs there, learning more about the job and what it looks like in her future. We also have a medical careers program that started this year. It's been a little busy. With the medical careers program, we have 28 students that are currently going through a program where they will get a medical assistant certification at the end of the year-long program. They also go out on clinicals. So clinicals are every quarter, and they're for one week, and they go out to our partners. And we're currently partnering with Henry Ford, Cedar Brook, and Pomeroy. And these students will go out and work alongside people that are doing the job, and they learn more about the careers, and they're also getting lots more training. They are BLS certified right now, CPR certified, and then they'll get that medical assistant cert at the end of the year. And then, we also have educational careers that's happening throughout our high schools, and these are opportunities for students that want to go into the world of education. And they then go out to our feeder schools, and there are all the lovely mascots of all of our little feeder schools, and we have 35 future educators that are going out into our elementary and middle school buildings and learning alongside our wonderful teaching staff. Not just kids that want to go into teaching are also doing this. These are kids that want to go into psychology, counseling, administration, support services within our school district. So they really get to see what that looks like, and then they can figure out what high school looks like as far as their programming after that. And then, this is when I'd like to invite my colleague, Charlotte Oliver. Charlotte Oliver is our work-based learning coordinator that we have in our district, and she's going to talk a little bit about her role in placing students at all these fantastic businesses.
Okay, hello. Good evening. Yes, as Karen alluded, I've said, my name is Charlotte Oliver, and I'm the work-based learning coordinator at Stony Creek. We do have work-based learning happening as it relates to co-op for all three campuses. If we could switch to the next slide, so you can also see, I think we have the Stony. Oh, you are, sorry. I guess we're in control. So ultimately, students, it's very much like co-op was back in the day, many years ago, where students are enrolled in a course in one or two sections, depending on what works for their schedule, and then students are able to leave campus and extend their learning beyond the classroom in a more practical world, real-world application situation. So these are some of the companies that currently students are at this semester, but we have quite a few business partners that we've been able to partner with over the many years that co-op has been running in Rochester schools. And we're continuing to welcome on new partnerships as we continue to add students and as students' interests change. So what we try to do as best we can is try to place students into areas that work best for what their interests lie, so that students have the opportunity to learn a little bit more about a particular field or a particular pathway while they're still in high school to determine whether or not that might be something they continue to pursue before they dive deep into that path in college, or even whether or not maybe that's even the right path for them at all. So that, yeah, I guess that's it, right?
No, that's good. Okay. So as you can see, we've got 26 students that are currently out in the workforce over at Rochester High, and some of the students from Adams travel to Rochester to meet with their coordinator, and then they also go out into the community. And then Charlotte's got 27 students that she's working with, placing in the community. They are on a training plan, a training agreement and training plan, and that training plan has to have actionable items the students need to meet that is aligned with their educational development profile. And there's nothing better than getting a student that takes a co-op and then ends up in that career. And that's when I think about my dear friend at the back there. Jeremy was with Nick Banda back in the day, one of my co-op students, and he reported to you, and now he's working for you guys. So that's the perfect situation that we want to see. We also have situations where kids will go out to a placement, and it's not what they're looking for. Veterinary clinics usually are the ones that really suffer because they don't understand that, you know, there's a lot of euthanization that happens at veterinary clinics, and some students don't know how to deal with that, and so they change their career plans after that. But we've really, really had such a successful partnership with people in the community. I mean, I have a listserv that's as long as my arm of wonderful businesses that have taken on students in my career, which is 23 years long, because this community is willing to do whatever they can to support our students. And with that said, we also have one more program that's on the books for next year, 2025-26, and that's partnering with, you know, the police cadet program here at Rochester. And we're super excited about that. We're actually interviewing our cadets for the fire, EMT, and police on Monday and Tuesday of next week. So we'll get to interview those students, make sure that they have everything that they need to have to be allowed to take this course, which again, is truly behind the, does it align with their EDP and their future plans after high school? So we're very, very proud of work-based learning. Work-based learning does come in many different guises. For those students that do not go out on a work placement, we also have job shadow opportunities where students go out into the community. They can take one day out of school, and they can go out and learn more about a career that they're interested in. We have many opportunities for any community member to come in and guest speak or help support any of our CTE programs when it comes to, you know, interview skills, looking and helping them, support them with their resumes and their LinkedIn profiles. And then obviously, the field trip opportunities are abundant. Getting students on a bus sometimes can be a little bit tricky, but we know when we do get them out into the workforce and we get them into facilities, that's when their eyes truly open. And so that's something that we do make sure happens for our students. So with that said, if there was any questions, I'd love to answer any at this time.
All good.
That's great. That's a great program.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you for sharing it.
I probably gave you a little bit too much information in this little packet, but yeah, these are all the courses that we offer with all the classes, all three campus buildings, and then our teachers and all the credentials and the CTSOs, the career and technical education clubs and societies we have. So yeah, if you have any questions, please don't hesitate to email me or give me a call. I put my information on the packet. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Is there any other further public comment tonight? Brian here? Brian, is there anything?
Yes, thank you. I'm not seeing any callers with their hands raised.
Okay, thank you, Brian. Okay, we'll move on to approval of the consent agenda. First is a receipt of the check register report. Do we need to make a motion on that?
Yeah. Oh, I thought we had.
Motion to approve the consent agenda as approved. As presented. By Councilmember Sage, supported by Councilmember Jones. Madam Clerk, the role please.
Bixson.
Yes.
Hauser.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
Trent.
Yes.
Thank you. Next, there's no old business or table items. There's not any public hearings, legislative deliberation, onto reports and regular business. First is a consideration request to set a public hearing regarding bonding for the community house, and I think there was other things on that bond as well, so tonight is for a public hearing.
Just setting the date?
That's all we're doing.
That's it, yeah. April 14th.
April 14th.
Is there a motion?
Oh.
Motion by Councilmember Trent.
I make a motion to.
Supported by Councilmember Jones. Councilmember Trent?
I was just going to state the motion.
Yeah, I was going to state it, but that's fine. We all agree what it is.
Madam Clerk, the role please.
Bixson.
Yes.
Hauser.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
Trent.
Yes.
Thank you. Next is a principal shopping district renewal discussion. We are not setting a public hearing for this. Ms. Nick?
Yes, that's the goal, to set the public hearing for, Kristy, what date did we have?
I believe it's for the next meeting.
Yeah, March 25th.
25th.
So tonight, we're voting just to set the public hearing. Is that correct?
Correct. So in talking with Mayor Salvia and the principal shopping district group, instead of just dropping a bomb on everybody on the 25th, the idea is like the planning commission, we come, make a presentation, so you can get the background. You've got two weeks for extra comments. Anybody watching on TV can make, call Kristy to get their questions answered, and then we would take action on the 25th, not tonight. So tonight is the background setting you up for the 25th actual public hearing.
So there is no discussion tonight. It is just simply listening to a presentation.
Or you could give her, just like at the planning commission.
We're not in the public hearing. There should be no discussion.
You could, council can ask questions.
But I mean, in theory, we'd have the discussion at the public hearing, right? Or we can talk.
Whatever, however they call it. Is that when we would ask our questions, at the public hearing?
It's just like the planning commission. We ask questions, don't ask questions. You can, I mean, it's a discussion item here. It's an item on the agenda for discussion, for background, to help you make a decision at the public hearing, so.
That's what I thought.
So we'll have the presentation, and we'll see how it goes.
Okay.
Excited already. Here we go. Please just give some background, and I'm certain that Councilmember Jones can echo this, and we've talked about this at PSD. Actually, two of my other PSD board members are here, Karen and Paul, that we thought, again, looking back to last year, as Nick stated, we had submitted some things last year. We didn't have discussion, and then when we came for public hearing, we felt like there were a lot of questions we could have answered had we had discussion. So we figured we'd put something forward. If you have questions, we're happy to answer them. Bring anything back to you in the future, or if you just want to listen, and that's fine, too. So whatever, here we go. So for the PSD renewal this year, as you recall, we did a one-year renewal last year. So this whole presentation is to give you guys some background on what we do, what we've done in the last year, how we do what we do, and then to set you up for what we're looking for to set the public hearing for later this month. So kicking things off in our presentation tonight, we're going to give an overview of the PSD, talk about the funding that the PSD receives, talk a little bit about strategy and value, the events that we do, and taking a cue from Backdoor Taco, they have a side of their menu is tacos, the other side is not tacos, so we have not events. Thanks for the laugh, I appreciate that, Karen. Did a couple case studies, one from the event side, one from the not-event side, and then giving you a preview of the assessment proposal, and then of course, asking any questions if you would like. So diving right in, it's opening day last year. For the PSD overview, this is the very dry part from the ordinance, just reminding everybody that the PSD is an ordinance. It is something that the city council can set if you so choose. We've been doing it here in Rochester since 1994. It is to promote economic activity in the district. You can do marketing, you can do special events, related activities, things like that. PSDs can't build things. They can't build a road. They can't buy a light pole, but they can do all kinds of events, promotions, public relations, all of those things, and that's a lot of what we do, and so we'll be digging into that a little bit. But this is just a reminder, and this is actually in the city code as well. So for PSD funding, we actually receive PSD from three different sources. The PSD assessment itself, which is what we're talking about here tonight, that's an assessment on the properties in the district. They're assessed based on their location, and it's on a per-square-foot basis that goes to the property owner. It isn't up to the property owner if they choose to pass it along to the tenants through their rent or through a direct billing. DDA participation, the DDA also participates in the PSD, transferring funds there and also sharing staff with the PSD, because anything that the PSD does benefits the businesses, and of course, the DDA's mantra is to work on economic development for the city and supporting the businesses. And last, but certainly not least, fundraising. This includes revenue from sponsorships, cooperative advertising opportunities, which I'll talk a little bit about tonight, vendor registration fees, and ticketed events. So these are things that their primary purpose is for fundraising, and all of that goes into what we then spend on all of the events and not events. So in terms of strategy and value, I just kind of want to give you a little high level of when we are having these discussions at PSD, especially when we went to goals and objectives, we start at zero, and we work up and decide what's working, what's not. We try to review them throughout the year, but then at the goals and objectives means we go over everything, and if anybody has questions, concerns, that's the place that we can address them and decide if those things need an adjustment or if they maybe need to fall off of our event program. So we have a couple values and strategies that we hold true. To make Rochester a destination for residents and visitors through a diverse offering of special events and promotions, and especially social interactions. If you listen to any of my DDA presentations, we talk about the epidemic of loneliness and trying to create more opportunities for people to be together, and that's something that both the DDA and the PSD are focusing on in a lot of our programming coming forward. Create an environment where small businesses can grow and thrive. And of course, it is nice to, we do the special events because we want the community to come down, but at the end of the day, this is about the businesses surviving, creating opportunities that people want to come to our district and go into the shops, the restaurants, the service businesses. Providing access to marketing initiatives and media outlets for our businesses to increase their reach. A lot of times, there are things, like a lot of our merchants might like to be featured on TV, or might like to do direct mail, or might do some different things, but it just financially is beyond them. We're able to create programs in response to those requests that we can allow them to get access to those types of media opportunities and marketing opportunities at zero to little cost to them. And of course, we always want to create a place as far as people to love where they live. So while the funding for this comes from the businesses and from the property owners, it really does benefit everyone in our community. This is from, in case you're just wondering what this weird picture is, this is from Rochester Pose. This was the winning widow last year from Hairspray. If you're familiar with the Broadway musical, this is the opening of Tracy Turnblatt. It's really cool, if you're into that. So anyway, we do a lot of events here in town. I'm not going to go into all of them as we get into questions, and of course, we'll be back multiple times talking about all of this when we get to the public hearing and eventually the budget conversation. But these are all of the events that we do. Right now, we're getting ready for farmer's market and maker's market and deck art, but this is a chronological calendar, starting in January all the way down, of all of the different pure events that we do to draw people to the district. Then we have our not events. So you can't event every day. I'm sure that you hear this a lot from people that are coming in, that are hosting events at the park. They're like, we just want to enjoy our park. We don't want to have an event every day. I think the same could be said for downtown. We don't need or want an event every day, but that doesn't mean that we don't need that top-of-mind awareness, so that when people are thinking, oh, where do I want to shop this weekend? Where do I want to go to bite to eat? That we want to make sure that we're still having a top-of-mind awareness. So to fill in those gaps, that's where we have our not events. We just ended our foodie February promotion, which was successful again. We are working on our in-town magazine right now that will be hitting homes in the middle of April. Rochester's Explorer Club, which is a partnership with the City of Rochester that the community loves, those are the badges for Explorers Club. If you're not familiar, I'm happy to go into it later, but we have over 800 kids that come downtown, sign up. It's completely free, sponsored by the city, the PSD, and the businesses, and the kids get to come down and complete free activities going into the businesses and collecting badges all summer long. It's been super popular for us. Taste of Fall, Magical Mural Tour, which I'm sure everyone's seen around, we just featured one of the murals a couple slides ago. The Snowman stroll, which is Snowman in the Corners. The Holiday Gift Store, buy one, get one, that is funded through the Love Local program right now. So our social media channels, which are numerous, and our reach is growing every season, and it's been incredibly effective for us, and that also includes our Love Local Rochester page that we created, where our businesses can communicate to our local community and even beyond in a hyper-local fashion. Our downtown texting service that we actually received through a grant through Oakland County to get it started, it is growing by leaps and bounds and is a super popular way to communicate with people, not just within our community, but without, but beyond. Our business directory that we have scaled back to doing that just once a year because we updated on our website, but the business directory just gets a little bit cumbersome to produce a couple times a year, so we've gone down to just once a year, and it's a cost savings for us. And then, of course, our website, which has a little bit of everything on it. Everything that I've just featured in these two slides is there. That seems to be a landing page for people to find out, dig in a little bit about buying tickets for things or how they participate in things, but anything that you see in any of these last two slides are all focused into our social media as well. So starting with the case study, I decided to take the two highest expenditure items from each of my two categories, from events and not events. Starting with events, of course, the big bright light show. Spoiler, it's the light show. Yep, so number one with the bullet of what we spend the most on, but of course, we receive the most benefit. So these are the impact statistics. These are from, if anyone was familiar, through Main Street Oakland County, we have access to a statistics website called Placer AI, where they track people's location through cell phone data, and they can tell you where they are in a certain time period and how long they've spent there. So we gave them the dates for the big bright light show this last year. For our visitors to the district, we had 1.4 million visitors that came to our district during the big days the light show was aglow this year. That equated to an average dwell time of 118 minutes. And I know there's a lot of people that say, oh, well, the light show, people just drive through it. Not at 118 minutes, they don't. It won't record those people, so this doesn't even count the people that just drive through and park. These are people that physically have gotten out of their cars and that they have stayed in a place, I believe that the minimum that'll start tracking people is eight minutes. So this is 118 minutes. So either that's a super-long selfie, and they just can't figure it out, or they're coming downtown, spending time, getting that photo, but also going into our businesses, getting a bite to eat, things like that. The economic impact, merchants tell us, they generate 30% to 40% of their annual income during the big bright light show season. The reason I bring this up, and actually, Karen, you got me thinking about this when we were going through our numbers, was we were talking about revenue versus expenditure, and this is, of course, the most expensive thing that we do, but if you compare it to the revenue that we bring in, it really doesn't bring in as much revenue as you might think. But again, the main purpose of what we're doing is not to give us revenue, it's to give the businesses revenue. Exactly. And that's, I think Karen was trying to get that to me on Tuesday, and I wasn't getting it, and I got it after we left. It took me a minute, I got there. So the economic impact, and this is consistently since year one of the light show, that we have found that it increased business those first couple years, and now it's maintaining at that 30% to 40% level during the days that the show was aglow, and because of the Ammon Ra Home Bakery phenomenon, we got a little. But the business directory just gets a little bit cumbersome to produce a couple of times a year. So we've gone down to just once a year, and it's a cost savings for us. And then, of course, our website, which has a little bit of everything on it. Everything that I've just featured in these two slides is there. That seems to be a landing page for people to find out, dig in a little bit about buying tickets for things or how they participate in things. But anything that you see in any of these last two slides are all focused into our social media as well. So starting with the case study, I decided to take the two highest expenditure items from each of my two categories, from events and not events. So starting with events, of course, the big bright light show. Spoiler, it's the light show. Yep. So number one with the bullet of what we spend the most on, but of course, we receive the most benefit. So these are the impact statistics. These are from, if anyone was familiar, through Main Street Oakland County, we have access to a statistics website called Placer AI, where they track people's location through cell phone data. And they can tell you where they are in a certain time period and how long they've spent there. So we gave them the dates for the Big Bright Light Show this last year. For our visitors to the district, we had 1.4 million visitors that came to our district during the big days. The light show was aglow this year. That equated to an average dwell time of 118 minutes. And I know there's a lot of people that say, oh, well, the light show, people just drive through it. Not at 118 minutes, they don't. It won't record those people. So this doesn't even count the people that just drive through and park. These are people that physically have gotten out of their cars and that they have stayed in a place, I believe that the minimum that'll start tracking people is eight minutes. So this is 118 minutes. So either that's a super long selfie and they just can't figure it out. Or they're coming downtown, spending time, getting that photo, but also going into our businesses, getting a bite to eat, things like that. The economic impact, merchants tell us, they generate 30 to 40% of their annual income during the Big Bright Light Show season. The reason I bring this up, and actually, Karen, you got me thinking about this when we were going through our numbers, was we were talking about revenue versus expenditure. And this is, of course, the most expensive thing that we do, but if you compare it to the revenue that we bring in, it really doesn't bring in as much revenue as you might think. But again, the main purpose of what we're doing is not to give us revenue, is to give the businesses revenue. Exactly. And that's, I think Karen was trying to get that to me on Tuesday, and I wasn't getting it. I got it after we left. It took me a minute. I got there. So the economic impact, this is consistently since year one of the light show that we have found that it increased business those first couple of years, and now it's maintaining at that 30 to 40% level during the days that the show was aglow. And because of the Amen Ra Home Bakery phenomenon, we got a little extended season this year as well. And then media impact, we continue to be excited that we not only get local, regional, but also national coverage. This year, we are covered again in Parade Magazine and the Wall Street Journal. When I say coverage, this is not an event listing where they just mention that something's going on. This is actually an article detailing what we do and why people should come here. And those are the things that are reflected there. If you're looking for a full list of all the accolades that we received last year for the light show, but this goes back to Mayor Salvia, that she asked us to put this together, it is on our website if you go through what's happening and find Holiday. There'll be a whole list with links to all of the articles from the last year. So then flipping to the other side, keeping in since we did the highest expenditure for Big Bright Light Show, we decided to do highest expenditure for the In-Town Magazine. So the In-Town Magazine, this has been in existence since 1997. It has grown back and forth. When I say that, I would say that at its heyday, we probably were up in the area of 48 pages. With, because some people still like paper, some people are moving to digital. We have a digital edition. But our magazine fluctuates between 36 and 40 pages now. But within that, and this is specific to the last magazines, I thought that was the closest data that I could give you. So for the impact statistics for the most recent magazine, which is pictured on your right, the number of businesses featured was 101. That means that they either had an event listing, they're listed in the Taste of Fall, they provided us with a product, or they were featured in an article. So if you think about that, our whole business district is about 425 plus businesses. So then of those, about 200 are retail, restaurant, salon. So we were able to feature 101 of them in just one issue of our magazine. Number of ads purchased, because this is not something that is, it's not a fundraiser, but it is a cooperative advertising piece. If no one's familiar, I know Marilyn is, but not familiar with cooperative advertising. The idea is, is that you make a larger media buy, and then you sell off pieces at a reduced rate to the businesses. We've been doing this for years. We used to do it with newspaper. We've done it with magazine, our Detroit, we still do it with Channel 7. We've done radio before, but it's a way to give our merchants access to media and to opportunities that they wouldn't normally get because one of our merchants can't afford to buy a flight on Channel 7. But we do that at the holiday, and then we resell a piece to them. Same thing with this. They wouldn't ever, direct mail is very expensive. And to put something together like this, this is targeted, and I'll get into that second. I'm going a little ahead of myself. Nonprofits, all the nonprofits that we work with through all of our events throughout the year, they also participate in the magazine. I will tell you that we have a couple that they, the Rochester Community Symphony Orchestra, they call us two months in advance to make sure that they know what the deadline is for the magazine, so they can get their write-up in to get into the event calendar. Because they don't have the money to advertise. They don't know how to use social media. They know how to use us. They know how to do that. And that takes place at St. Paul's, which is lovely, and they've been with us for years upon years. So the magazine, while when you look at it, I call it a cleverly disguised advertising piece. There's editorial, there's paid advertising for the businesses that want to have an elevated presence in that magazine. But then at the same time, if somebody just calls us and says, hey, I want to put one of my pieces of merchandise in the magazine for free, you bet. We go down there, I was, we said at PSD last week, we're in about 60 businesses, Taylor and I last, two weeks ago, picking up merchandise that we put in different categories, responding to trends to make sure that we can get as many businesses as physically possible to be in that magazine. The upcoming issue is actually going to feature the All Abilities Park over at the park, which we're really excited about. But our spring magazine is coming soon. It's distributed to 43,000 homes in Rochester, Rochester Hills and Oakland Township. We buy by zip code. We do not buy by demographic, and I think that's an important distinction to make. For instance, our Detroit, I think a lot of people are familiar with that magazine. They don't mail, they also have, they have a few subscribers, but they go to, they mail based on demographic of household income. So those are the people that are giving that direct mail that are not subscribing to it. Ours goes to everyone. If you have a zip code in Rochester, Rochester Hills, Oakland Township, you are getting that. I know Councilmember Jones had mentioned, there's a couple other magazines out there, and why do we need this one when we have two others? I think each of them has its own purpose and its own vibe and its own direction, and this is ours. So ours is open to everyone for everyone. And then last but not least, again, I know that this is a conversation that we have a lot, because if you look at the numbers on the magazine, it costs us per issue about $37,500. We bring in about, between 13 and 14,000 per issue. But if you put it all together at the pure cost, not taking out what we make from the revenue, our cost per piece is 87 cents. That's designed, photographed, written, printed and mailed. If you're not familiar, it's an incredible bargain. I'm looking at Marilyn. 87 cents is an incredible bargain for a, this was a 40-page magazine.
Oh, that's right.
It's a pretty, we, trust me, we set up a makeshift photo studio in our office. We do everything we can on the shoestring, but hopefully it doesn't look like it. We do our best. We used to do it in the conference room upstairs at the old office, which I still don't know how we did because we're little. But yes, so this, again, another fun fact I would point out is that we grandfather our covers of our magazine, the inside front and the back cover. Our back cover has been Paul Hey. Paul, do you know how long you've been doing it? I looked it up today.
How long?
2011. And that was because DMG Interiors had it before you, and then they moved and didn't want to do the magazine anymore. But the inside front cover has had the same advertiser since day one, from issue one. Was Casual Concepts, eventually became Allstate Home Leisure, and is now Watson's. What I think is interesting about that is that it went from local ownership to local plus with Allstate, and now suddenly it's regional and beyond Michigan. And each time that the business has sold, their marketing department, which has a lot more resources than we do, has looked into the information about what we provide, where we go, and they continue to advertise with us. So that has been nonstop for over three decades. So we're pretty excited about that because I think that you'll find with a lot of our things that we do, we have a very high rate of return from sponsors and advertisers. So now we get to the assessment proposal, which you've all been waiting for, of course. So last year's proposal, when we came to you, we were asking for, we were just coming off of a five-year increase or a five-year renewal, which we all, I think we all agreed last year was just too long. We appreciated the runway and thought that was great and appreciated the support, but unfortunately, a lot of things happened in five years. And we weren't able to react to it because we were within assessment and costs were going up and we couldn't react. So last year, we had come in asking for a three-year assessment. First year would be a 25% increase to get us caught up from the previous five years of no increase. And then years two and three, we were looking for a 10% increase. As you may recall, we were approved for one year only. I think that everyone was sympathetic to the fact that we had five years. Five years was a long time. Things happened. COVID happened. There was a lot in there. So I think everyone was sympathetic to that, but was hoping that we could go back to the drawing board for years two and three to see if we could do better than that. So having said that, 2025, so we were hoping to come back with something flat. Unfortunately, where we are right now is that we are hearing from, we've heard from at least two of our vendors, where we bring in things like the Christmas lights, they come in from overseas, and they've already let us know to expect an increase in our shipping cost for that because they believe that there will be increased costs there. We've also heard from the city that our Blue Cross Blue Shield costs will be going up. And so that's something that we are going to have to consider. So having said that, working with the finance department, with Anthony and Marcy, which they are phenomenal to work with, and they're the smartest people that I know, we're asking for a two-year assessment. And within that, what we are looking at is we're requesting a 4% inflationary increase each year. This is not for new programming. This is not to do anything other than what we are currently doing. It's just to react to, we know that there are inflationary costs coming, and we need to be able to react to them. This equates to a penny or 1.6 cents per square foot. That's the range. And then it was included in your packet in the map, but just I brought it up bigger in this, sorry. Average-sized business, which business space, for instance, is about 2,000 square feet downtown. So we ran the calculation on our space at the studio, and our rent would be going up $60 a year each time. So this is what was on your map, really tiny, so this is bigger. Just to give you a little bit of background, so the proposed value increase would be 421,705 for the next year. When we came the last time, our 2025 assessment at the 10% would have been 443,136. So we've got the savings there. And then same thing, going up to 435, so that's an additional 4%. Again, we're still in the range of the one cent to 1.6 cents. We would have been, had you approved that assessment at 479,705. So as you can see, we sharpened our pencils, we did the work. But in speaking with Anthony and Marcy, they could not, and they will be happy to tell you good conscience, recommend us flat because we will already be behind the eight ball before we get the first assessment in, because we already know that there are increases coming. So this is what we are hoping you will be setting a public hearing on, that then everyone can talk about it and see where we want to go. And I'm happy to answer questions. Go Lions.
So Council, do you want to have discussion, or do you want to just set up public hearing?
Can we go back to the previous amount that, so you're asking for 13,000 more? Is that what you're saying?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, it's literally, we're asking for a penny. People on Main Street would be an extra 1.6 cents per square foot. So it's nominal, because like I said, we're not trying to do more things with the money. We've already gone through, started at zero, cut back where we could, things like that, but that is, that's where we're going.
Mr. Mayor, ask a question.
Councilmember Howser.
Christie, last year, you put up on the screen a revenue expenditures by event promotion. Do you have an updated version of that document you could share with us in advance of next time you come before us?
Yes, I think I was waiting to, we did have something, that document at our PSD meeting. We were waiting to see where things went tonight. Because you'll still see us again at the public hearing, and then based on the amount that we are given, then we were going to bring that because we're still coming forward with a budget in April. But we could certainly provide that in advance of the public hearing to see, just based on if it was approved at the level we're asking, what that looks like. I'd be happy to do that.
Councilmember Trent.
Yeah, so based on what the events that you had last year, do you mean by sharpening your pencil, did you delete or decide not to do one? Or did you?
Sure. So we've done a couple of different things. We increased a couple of our sponsorship things, so maybe I don't know if that's sharpening as much as inflating, something like that. So we increased a little bit of that stuff. We were able to expand a few of our things, both at Makers Market and Kringle. We're able to get, Kringle's definitely more booths in there. And that seemed to work well, so we were able to work that in. We are adding a second cookie stroll. That actually makes money beyond what it costs, so that adds some more revenue into the pie that way. We also deleted Caroling in the City. We had already planned to delete it for next year, but we went ahead and deleted it in the current year just because we felt like it was an event that needed a rehab and thought that maybe the new site for it would be the Gram. So we went ahead and took it off the calendar this year and are continuing that it will not be on the calendar next year. And so that was some cost savings there as well. So it was in a few different areas across the board, and then we shaved some things. We were able to get a little bit more money in with sponsorship for the sidewalk sale, shaved some money in a couple other areas as well. So it's like lots of little nicks to make savings.
So that's how you went from 10% to 4%? Because based on the 10, because this is the, using the matrix or the, I don't know, the level set bar or whatever, it was 10%.
10% is what we were asking for.
And then, then you
Then I got it down.
You kept working down to the plate, to the place now where you're at, when you're asking for 4% after you have done these revisions.
What we got to was zero, so that we could go flat. And then Anthony said, no, you can't because we've got these things coming. So we had gotten to at least flat for one, we thought, at least for one year. And then we were hoping in the second year, then there would be an increase, because then we would have been going on three years without an increase.
Okay.
But unfortunately, that's not what's happening, because I already have two emails sitting in my box right now from two different suppliers that have told me to, one already said they're checking 5% onto our order in anticipation of what's happening. And then I just placed the order for the replacement Christmas lights this year, and they let me know that they don't know what that number is, but it's going to be a number.
Is it coming from out of the country? Is that what, okay, so we're talking about possible tariffs.
Yeah, our lights come from overseas. They're actually manufactured overseas. We order them now, and then they're brought in.
And so you can't get them before whatever, you don't know, because it's uncertain.
We don't know.
You don't know.
And actually, I think that's the best way to put it. We don't know.
No, it does. Okay.
Anthony's, but one thing I do know, healthcare's going up. That's across, that's citywide. We've already been told that. So that's something we can't control that is happening to us.
Well, it would be good to see what you cut out based from what you showed a year ago. That would be my request. What did you take out?
Councilmember Jones.
I just wanted to clarify, there are, there is a cap. Because I didn't realize until I looked at last year that we don't usually talk about that. And it was raised last year from 9,000 to 10,000, correct?
Correct.
And there are, is it still, there are six businesses at that $10,000 rate?
Six buildings, six properties.
So it might be one owner that has several properties.
No, it's by, so for instance, like the Nitty Mill is one property. The hotel is one property. The Atala Heart Center is one property, regardless of the number of tenants in said building. So it's assessed by the property, not by the individual businesses. So it's six buildings.
Okay, so $60,000 guaranteed from that because it's capped. It will not go higher.
So it possibly could. So Anthony had brought to my attention, we didn't do anything about it at PSD, but certainly it's something that we could entertain. Originally, the 10,000 cap that was statutory, they have now lifted that cap, and it can be increased inflationarily. That's a word. So that is something that we could do. That isn't included in the current proposal, but that is something that we could do. Because as Anthony was saying, it's only fair if everyone's getting a 4% inflationary increase, why wouldn't we do it on the capped properties as well?
And I guess one other quick thing, sorry, I'm sorry. So when we talked about when, with this creation of the Gram, that some of the programming would go over there, and there'd be a cost savings to that. Do you, you probably don't know what that might be now.
No, I really don't. And quite honestly, we're going back to putting in my DDA hat for a minute. We're going back to planning commission in April because we have found some things with the walls that were not favorable. And we're going to be spending some more money there, so I'm really reluctant to put any savings in for the following year based on the Gram. Because quite honestly, I think that there's going to be more expenses than we anticipate, and we may have to shift a little bit when we're installing things. So like, for instance, sound, screens, things like that. So yes, we hope that there would be savings like Movies in the Moonlight. We will have now our own screen and sound, which will definitely save money, and there will be other things we can do there. DDA, although you haven't, they will be coming for you for budget in April. They are setting aside money specifically for marketing the Gram, not included in PSD. We're not going to saddle the PSD district with that. The PSD staff will be working on those programs, but it will be DDA. They'll be increasing their contribution to the PSD to do those things, but we're not putting that onto the businesses. They'll benefit from it, but they're not going to be paying for it at this time based on our current proposal.
Thank you.
Councilmember Sage.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, or Member Tim. Christie, so go back to the revenue side, please.
Which revenue slide do you want?
I said you drive revenue from, there we go, funding.
Yeah.
So, and this might be the slide, Christian, you were talking about. Is it correct?
It was, no, there was a spreadsheet that had
Yeah.
It's that.
I know which one it is.
Yeah, I know which one it is.
But we also get an update on what percent of the funding each annually comes from each of these three.
Sure, I can give you the percentages. I mean, in current numbers, right now, the PSD is 395,000. 200,000, in addition to that, comes from the DDA, so 595. And then our fundraising, we're at about 265. We don't include cross charges and things like that. So pure sponsorship, co-op, vendor registration and ticketed. So somebody else can do math for me, but 265 is what we're bringing in ourselves, 265,000. So we're fundraising at a quarter billion.
So I think it would be helpful to have a slide that breaks all that out for everybody.
Yeah, happy to.
Great. Councilmember King.
I, I'd like the request for seeing the comparison to the revenue expenses from last year and adding in as Marilyn asked for the, like where the savings were, or were increases to revenue. I think that'd be helpful. One thing I did want to mention, just since the Gram potentially may not be ready till later on, Rabra does have a screen that can be used for Movies in the Moonlight that they purchased at the end of last year. So for this year, to the extent that the Gram's not available, that is available to the city. And I don't think there should be a cost to it because we funded that, so.
Sure. Yeah, we'll have to, I think that we may have signed our contract for the LED for this year, because that's what we have started doing is LEDs, so we can start earlier. But I can check with Jenna and see if we've already signed that contract. We usually sign a year-long contract for all the events. We get a discount.
Okay.
So, but I'd be happy to look into that, but thank you for sure.
So I have one question. Is it possible to see a budget without the tax increase? Without the 4%, what would it look like?
Sure. Yep. We did not do that, but yeah.
I mean, without doing a lot of
I have to ask, so I'd have, I, if you, I'm trying to think of the best way to put it. I don't think I should be doing that. I think it should be a PSD board thing, and I can't get back to them until April because we just meet once a month, but then the next time we're coming for a public hearing is March. I'm happy to take a crack at it, but I don't know if that's weird because I'm not the board. If you want me to call in a special meeting, I can. Otherwise, I'm happy to take a run at it. I just want everyone to know, just because I'm saying it, that doesn't mean that, as I'm looking at three of my PSD board members right now, just because I say it doesn't mean that's how it would be, but we could, I could take a swag at recommending something without the zero with the understanding that the P, it has not been voted on by the PSD board. Everybody's good with that. I just want that clarification. I don't want to show you something and say that, and then I go back and I don't wanna show you something and say that and then I go back and they're like, what'd you do?
Because to me, we, we gave twenty-five percent last year. You, you can't not have an increase after that. So that's just a question.
Right, and, and as I said, like I said, it's not for anything other than inflation. We're not trying to do anything else, um, the way that, and what I would say inflationary, and I'm happy to prepare the budget, but inflation isn't going away because the cost of goods just goes up. Even if there is a recession or not, or if everything's swimmingly, cost of things just goes up. And so at some point, we will need an increase. If we don't do it now, it, it will come eventually. Because like I said.
Or, or, or you could do less and not have an increase.
Sure, and I, and I'm happy to have that conversation. That's why I talked about strategy and value because there is a cost to doing less. I, I'd just like to put that out there.
I would echo Mayor Protem's comment, you know, there's more and more and more, but sometimes also in conjunction with that, maybe there's a little bit less too to balance it all out. So I think maybe, I don't wanna put words in my colleague's mouth, but I think maybe that's what I know I am and maybe some of my other partners are looking at is to say, okay, if it's zero, what can you do to, to bring it down?
Is there a motion to have a public hearing?
I will.
Councilmember Trent.
I will make a motion to have a public hearing about the PSD renewal. Or is it, what is it? Renewal. It'd be, it'd be March twenty.
March twenty, for March twenty-fifth.
Motion by Councilmember Trent.
Twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth.
I wrote it down, sorry.
May I just make a comment? Um, I, I don't know if anybody else had a conflict. That is, uh, spring break for the schools, so I will not be at that meeting, just one.
Was there support? I don't have we ones anymore.
Uh, is there support for the motion? Support for the motion?
Yeah, I'll support the motion, I'm sorry.
Support by Councilmember Howser.
Yes.
Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Bixson.
Yes.
Howser.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
Trent. Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Might as well stay up.
Yeah, I was gonna say, next one's mine.
Next is considering, consideration of the approval of the two thousand twenty-five downtown outdoor dining deck program.
Christie, I do wanna say thank you for preparing all of that.
Yeah.
What you just presented.
Yeah, that was good.
Thorough and thanks for listening to the comments.
Absolutely, yeah, and I didn't wanna get too deep into it. I could have brought a few of those extra things when speaking with Nick. Again, it, it's kinda walking that line because there's public hearing. You may hear a lot of this stuff again, I apologize in advance, but I didn't want there to be questions that you wish, you would have had any information on before we got there, so.
Perfect.
Um, yes, okay, so, uh, DDA, this is a continuation of our outdoor dining deck program that started during COVID. Um, it has been popular for us. It's continuing now. Um, we have, in your packet, you have the listed businesses that are planning on participating this year. Um, we're looking for, uh, approval to go ahead and use city parking spaces to do that. Uh, then, once approved, Anthony figures out how much by space. We'll give him the space numbers, how much those, uh, generate in revenue on average during that period, which is usually May through October. And then that is transferred into the parking fund from the DDA. Uh, we'll have one less deck this year because De Marcos is not participating. But last year, we picked one up when, uh, Saint Eighty-one was participating and they are participating again.
Councilmember Jones.
Um, the only comment I have, so this isn't just in the street, this is in front of the businesses too, correct?
No.
Just the street.
That's different, yes. So, uh, MDOT does not allow us to do anything on Main Street. We had actually approached them in twenty-twenty to see if we could do dining decks on Main Street. Uh, they do not like that, but Nick runs the program for the sidewalk cafes on Main Street. He does that. This is strictly the ones that are the raised, uh, decks, if you will, with the railings and the, the handicap ramps.
Okay, so even though this doesn't affect you, I will just make this comment now because I am, I, and I'll talk to Nick, concerned about the ones on the sidewalks. And I don't know, the, the restaurants always honor what the rules are about how far it is out. And I think our sidewalks are just so crowded already with the planters and, um, and to have those out makes it very difficult when it's a busy sidewalk to walk down it, so. And Nick knows, that's just one of my big things, but I have it officially out there again.
And these are not on sidewalks, these are on sidewalks.
Thank you for, thank you for listening.
Yes.
Councilmember Trent.
Uh, yeah, I love this program and, um, I don't see anything wrong with approving.
That a motion?
Yeah, yes, a motion to approve the two thousand twenty-five, uh, downtown outdoor dining deck program.
Support. Motion by Councilmember Trent, support by Councilmember Sage, Councilmember Howser.
No, I was gonna support, but.
Oh, sorry. Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Bixson.
Yes.
Howser.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
Trent.
Yes.
Thank you, when are they going up?
Um, usually they go up, uh, sometime in April with the weather breaking. It might be super late, exactly.
Get them up.
Yeah, but usually it's early April that you'll start seeing them pop up. We've had an early, uh, spring, last few years, yeah. Thank you, Council.
Thank you.
Next is consideration to set a public hearing to program, reprogram two thousand twenty-one CDBG funds from the Memorial Grove Park to the Municipal Park Pathway Renovation Project. Jeremy?
Hello, Council, how are you tonight?
Welcome.
You're welcome.
Um, so the previous funds for the twenty twenty-one CDBG funds were for the Memorial Grove. Um, that project is over and we have paid everything from that. Um, so we're just looking to reprogram those extra funds from that year into more park pathways, which has been a consistent thing that we've been spending CDBG money on. Um, I do wanna note that in the attachment, in the packet, that was the mu, amount of money that we had spent out of the fund. The actual amount of money that we will be reprogramming is eighteen thousand five hundred forty-one dollars and fifty-five cents. Or at least asking to be reprogrammed. Um, I've had meetings with the, um, CDBG Oakland County team and, um, they don't have any issues with us reprogramming, just doing a little bit of talking with them beforehand. Um, this portion of the project will be expanding a portion of the park pathways that we are already doing, um, for, or already planned to be doing. Um, so this is just an expansion, but it will help us fund some more park pathways.
Councilmember Jones.
So just so I understand specifically what kind of areas that you're talking, when you're talking about pathways, is it repairing ones that have issues or creating new ones?
So it's, uh, we're not expanding any of the footprints of the pathways. It's mainly the, this specific one is from the, uh, park, uh, garage or the GBB, um, past the big bathroom all the way down the hill until the flood plain hits. And we can't go into the hundred-year flood plain. And then that also expands on the other side of the GBB down, uh, by that big oak tree, uh, uh, adjacent with the river until the flood plain hits again. Um, and we will be expanding using city money to do, um, park pathways around the band shell as well. So that from the band shell all the way around up through the big bathroom, that will all be, uh, same project. But not expanding any of new ones.
Councilmember King.
Um, I'm not familiar with the term CDBG. Can you explain that?
Yeah, it's a commu, let me see if I can remember. Community development block grants. So a lot of communities do them either for small repairs like this. Um, some communities get more money than us and they're able to do more, um, program-based developments or program-based, um, projects. And those could be anywhere from, uh, minor home repairs to helping people do stove removal, uh, that maybe can't do that. So it's a flexible, um, amount of money from the county.
Yeah, so it's, it's, if I may, it's through feds to the county, county administers it. You have to be income eligible, it's very difficult to do for households. There, it's that much paperwork if you wanted to get twelve dollars from them. So communities try to do something, you have to be within a, a certain area that they designate that we only, we only have the municipal park, it's our only area we can spend money on for paths like that. So if not, we really don't have any other places that we can spend money.
It used to be low income.
It was low income.
And I, I also have heard that that's looking to be cut in federal budget.
We get typically less than thirty thousand. It's usually between twenty-five and twenty-nine thousand.
Right.
It falls around there.
Is this like an annual thing that we get?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, those pathways, they need work, so it's great.
Councilmember Sage.
Uh, just like to make a motion to reprogram the balance of the two thousand twenty-one CDBG funding in the amount of eighteen thousand five hundred and forty-one dollars and forty-nine cents towards the paths presented in the park. Oh, we're scheduling?
Yeah.
You're scheduling the public hearing for that.
So motion by Councilmember Sage to schedule a public hearing, is your support?
I support.
Councilmember Trent. Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Bixson.
Yes.
Howser.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
Trent.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll bring, uh, the maps that show at the public hearing, I have those, um, so I'll bring those next time.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you, next is consideration to approve the Oakland County Tactical Consortium Membership Agreement.
You achieve for two now.
Chief, how are you tonight?
Good, how are you? Happy spring.
Yes.
So Mayor Protem and Council, this is, uh, an organization that we belong to that provides training for a police agency. And usually the training deals with hostage negotiation, any kind of SWAT training, active assailant training. We've been members of this organization since two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen, somewhere in there. That's the last time that they, uh, we signed an agreement from what I understand. So the organization is getting bigger, so as a result, uh, the Board's getting larger. So they just expanded the agreement. Uh, the city attorney has reviewed it. He determined there was no issues. We pay five hundred dollars a year to belong to O-Tech, which is nice because we train with other jurisdictions. So in the event we do need, you know, mutual aid, everyone's basically trained the same. That's the whole idea with O-Tech. And, uh, the, I don't know if you knew this, but the barriers that we use at our Christmas parade and Lanyard, those big heavy archer barriers, we get that from O-Tech. We can also get four-wheelers from them and they have a SWAT mobile, so. But it, it costs us five hundred dollars a year. This basically, this membership, they just want Council to, um, have a resolution to authorize a city manager to execute the agreement. And we probably won't see this agreement for probably a few years down the road, so.
Councilmember Jones.
That seems like a great expenditure at five hundred dollars, everything you just described. Um, so does the, everyone on the police force can, can go through some of this training? Or is it certain, I mean, that's.
As long as we're members, uh, yes, anybody in the department. And what, what I like about their training, it's always up to date with current events, so it's, it's nice.
Well, I would motion, okay, okay.
Motion.
Yeah, a motion to approve.
By Councilmember Jones, support by Councilmember Howser. Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Bixson.
Yes.
Howser.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
Trent.
Yes.
Thank you, Chief. Next is consideration to approve the two thousand twenty-five high-intensity drug trafficking area subrec, sub-recipient agreement. And there's Exhibits A through E. Chief.
Yes, Mayor Protem, this, uh, now this is an annual agreement. We, every, or mostly's hit, uh, reviewed this last year. Uh, right now, we have one officer assigned to the Narcotics Enforcement Team. The Sheriff Department oversees that, uh, group. And, um, as a result, every year, they seek grant funding. And the grant funding is specifically for overtime and for phone. So our department, I guess, uh, two thousand twenty-five, they requested a hundred and, a hundred thirty-two thousand three hundred in grant funding for all the participating agencies. So each agency will receive up to sixty-two hundred and sixty dollars in for overtime costs. And our officer will receive about forty-seven dollars and five cents per month, uh, for his phone. They do supply the vehicle for the officer. And also with this, uh, agreement, they want you to approve Exhibits A through E. They're attached with this. And basically, the exhibits have to do with what we have to do as a municipality to, to obtain our funding for the overtime and for the phone. So there's just various forms there. And, uh, so it's kinda twofold. You have to approve the agreement and also Exhibits A through E. And you will see this, uh, agreement next year.
Councilmember Jones.
I'm just pulling questions. Um, so the, the one officer that's assigned to this will go out into other communities, obviously, and work with other forces, maybe Detroit or other areas then?
They could work in Detroit, but they typically stay in Oakland County. But it's kind of a local state group. They actually work with, um, FBI too, DEA. But typically, they stay in Oakland County. Wherever the information goes, they go. There's really, there's really no boundaries, so.
And is this, um, the office of the Senate, has he been in this position for a while? And is it something that other officers would like to be in? Like, is this a?
We rotate. You don't wanna, I, I don't like having an officer in these type of assignments more than five years.
Okay.
So we rotate them out. And plus it gives the employees opportunities to do something different.
Right, that's what I was thinking. Okay, great. Um, okay, sorry, I was gonna.
Councilmember King.
Yeah.
Yeah, I have a question for you. Um, I think during our budget session last year, um, we had talked about potentially, um, adding an officer that would be dedicated to like a drug enforcement agency. Is that different from this program?
This is a little bit different. There's different aspects. If you assign an officer to the DEA, they could be working in a street group. They could work in financial crimes. They could work on cases that involve racketeering, money laundering. So there's different aspects of it. And they do not provide a car, but they do pay, I think, double the overtime that we get from the net position. But if you put a, an officer in the DEA, it may take eighteen to twenty-four months to see any type of return on that officer's participation.
Okay, but so this, so this is a different program that we're doing.
Yeah, this is local level.
Are we, are these fees, are the, the requested HIDTA funds, are those funds that the city is paying to the program?
No, we don't pay anything. We, we get grant, we just supply them with the officer. In return, they will pay for the officer's car, the officer's up to six thousand and change for overtime and the phone. So every year, let's say the, let's say the group itself seized a million dollars. They divide all that money between all the agencies and we get a check. I thi, I believe last year, we received a check for around forty-five thousand dollars. That money goes into our drug forfeiture account and that has to be spent on law enforcement purposes only.
Okay.
Councilmember Sage.
I think we started this, participating in this, twenty-ten, twenty-eleven, or is it even earlier than that? Or is it even earlier than that?
It's been a while, several years, yes. Yep.
I'll just make a motion. Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the 2025 High Intensity Drug Trafficking Area Subsequent Agreement and Exhibits A through E.
Motion by Councilmember Jones, support by Councilmember Sage. Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Bixson.
Yes.
Hauser.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
Trent.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next is consideration, approve an agreement with Apartment Services Company for lawn maintenance at Mount Avon Cemetery. Mr. DPW Director Nick, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem, Council. Yes, we're looking to get approval for the lawn service agreement. Looking to do a three-year agreement. Current vendor is Apartment Service Company. So it's gonna be a three-year agreement. They're looking to, they are going to hold their price from last year. So their contract agreement for first year would be $5,125, with a 2% increase for your two and three.
Oh, is that it?
Councilmember Jones.
Um, my, I think we talked about this, Nick and I, and, um, city manager, I should say, about, is there a way, they cut really early and late in times that, could we skip a cut just for the cemetery budget and for the DPW budget? Because we are gonna be doing some different things in the cemetery. We're really working on trying to clean up the headstones and repairs and cleaning. Is there any opportunity to say, we don't want 28 cuts?
Sure.
We want 25 cuts? Or is that, do you think a negotiating tool you could use?
If I may, it's not so much that, it's, it's a pressure from the public to her. If you're, you own a plot there and we skip a week because we're trying to save $12, they're gonna be all over us, so. But this, this group is awesome where they don't, if it's August, second cut, they won't do it.
So even though they're charging for 28 cuts, we might not.
That is correct.
Get 28. I would just like to reinforce with them that.
Yeah.
That to not be cutting when it's not necessary, so.
Councilmember Trent.
Uh, yes, so is this the same company that we've been using?
Yes, yep. We've probably been using this company for over 40 years, yeah.
I.
I think one time, we, they were gonna drop out and we went out and looked.
It was horrible.
And it was a lot more.
I.
Because these are, this is a special.
Good, they do, yeah, they do a good job. I lived next to cemetery for many, many years and they did a good job. But I do have a question, because I was out working in the cemetery garden and it looked like there was a lot of, there was some herbicides or pesticides, maybe glyphosate that were being used. And they just kept spraying the edges in a slow roll. The employee was just spraying and spraying and spraying. And they did also spray the, the, in the, the herbicide in my, in the cemetery garden, which actually killed the plant. So my request would be, is there a way to cut down on it? Because I mean, you don't, you only need to spray the border once. This person kept just listening to their headphones and just kind of spraying and spraying.
Yeah, I did hear about that and, you know, make sure it doesn't happen to that extent.
And there, and there really aren't very many, I mean, this is not a golf course. So if they could just cut down minimally, that's fine on glyphosate, because I'm not sure what they, the return on investment is, when honestly, it is not anywhere near a golf course and I like it that way. I'm fine with that. It's just grass growing and then they cut it. So I appreciate there, if you would, I mean, they could save money.
Right.
And then no nick, and they also, we do have a ban on neonicotinoids, Neonyx, there's six, six type of, that's a pesticide, they don't need to use that either. And we have it on public lands and it's on, in our ordinance. Thanks.
Absolutely.
Thank you, is there a motion?
Oh, yeah, I'll, I'll make a motion.
By Councilmember Trent.
As long as they look into the herbicide.
Councilmember Sage. Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Bixson.
Yes.
Hauser.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
Trent.
Yes.
Thank you. Next is consideration, request to use Environmental Wood Solutions for leaf removal.
Yes, thank you. So yeah, we're looking to remove the leaf collection from last year's leaf season. Once again, with the vendor of Environmental Wood Solutions that we've been using for quite some years now. We figure we roughly have about 800 yards or tons of leaves that we need to remove. So that's where that budget number comes from. So we're looking for approval of $31,212 to remove the leaf collection from last season.
Very good. Councilmember King.
Um, I'd like to request abstaining from a vote on this item due to work conflict.
Do we have to vote on?
To make, make a motion.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to permit Councilmember King from abstaining from this vote due to conflict.
Motion by Councilmember Hauser. Support, support by Councilmember Sage. Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Bixson.
Yes.
Hauser.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
Trent.
Yes.
Is there discussion on this motion?
I have a quick question. Do you remember what, you might not know because you weren't here, but maybe city manager does, do you remember what the amount was last year that we paid for this? Is it about the same?
I asked that question actually and Jason gave it back to me. I think it was, it's a dollar more if I'm not mistaken.
It was actually a dollar fifty, if you're asking for the, the increase, is it the?
Yeah.
Per ton, yeah.
So, okay, so this doesn't have anything to do with how you guys are cleaning the leaves from the?
No, this is just pretty much removing them from our yard wherever you stored them.
Oh, okay. Oh, oh, they're removing them, oh, I gotcha.
This, this was actually worded kind of, yeah, where I actually had somebody call me and say, why was the DPW not going to do it anymore and subbing it up?
Yeah, no, this is just remove them from our yard.
I see. And then where do they go? Where do they go? Do they have?
They go and recycle, yeah.
Oh, and then they, they remove them somewhere?
Yep.
To their facility or?
Exactly.
And that, are they burying them?
They go to, they go to leaf heaven.
I just want to know, are they burying them?
They recycle and make mulch.
Oh, okay. All right, well then I will make a motion.
Motion by Councilmember Trent.
To, yes.
Support by Councilmember Hauser. Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Bix, Bixson.
Yes.
Hauser.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Oh, no, I abstained.
Sage.
Yes.
Trent.
Yes.
Take out the leaves.
She panicked.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Some questions.
Uh, next, we have a review of boards and commissions vacancies. Clerk.
Um, Your Honor, at the end of last meeting, Mayor Salvia asked that this be on. I don't know what exactly her purpose was for that. She and I did meet and we went through all of the list, updated it. We have, as the clerk's office, sent out emails to everyone asking that they renew their applications. Brian and Anna and Megan are working on getting it up on the website. That'll be done this week. And then also, something new, she and I thought it would be helpful if we formalized the ad hoc committee meeting process. We've gotten pretty loose. I will use, for example, the blight in the CAT committees. They weren't really ever motioned that we would create it, no purpose stated. So what we thought we would do is maybe go back and do all of them and re-assess each one of them in May, when we do all of the boards and committees. So look for that to happen. And if anybody has any comments on this form, just let me know.
Very good.
I like that. Good idea.
Okay, thank you. Next, receive reports from various boards and commission. First is report from the OPEB Board, Councilmember Hauser. Will you?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, you caught me flat-footed there. I'm sorry. Oh, yes, so we had a, a meeting at the OPEB and that was very well done. We discussed the move of certain funds from, well, strike that. We talked about the status of the dollars that were already in place for the, the state. And then we also discussed moving something, if you remember what that one was?
That's the first one I just.
Yeah, I'm try, and Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Yeah.
Why don't we postpone this to the next meeting?
Yeah, is it okay? Yeah, I want to make sure I'm accurate because I had my notes mistaken there. I'm very sorry about that.
Okay. Um, next, we have a report from the Rochester Area Youth Assistant Committee, Councilmember Jones.
Um, yes, so we have a youth council amongst the Raya Board and they had a table at the Crosstown Showdown that was very successful. And that is the game between two rival high schools here in Rochester. We had a successful camp pancake breakfast, thanks to the fire department for allowing us to use their facility and they're so helpful setting it up and helping us throughout the event. We have a, tomorrow night, we have the youth recognition event. It's at the CAF barn. Mayor Pro Tem will be there, also member, Councilmember Trent. And if anyone else wants to come, it's one of those just wonderful events to go to. It's the outstanding students in the community that have gone above and beyond in their volunteerism. And we are going to have last year's, one of last year's award winners, Stephen Carter, is going to be our keynote speaker and he is in eighth grade. And he is gonna talk about what volunteering has meant to him. He is a rock star, Marilyn knows him well. So that's exciting. On April 10th, there's another wonderful event that is at one of the high schools. I won't be here. And that is to represent, or to present scholarships. We do two scholarships, they're $2,000 each. And on March 3rd, earlier, camp registration began for, not forgetting the name, Camp Safari, which is run through RAR, and it's a great event. And we participate and we help fund it, as well as the city of Rochester Hills. And it's for lower-income kids and buses pick them up in their different subdivisions and take them to camp. And it's, it's a great, great camp. So that has begun, that's it.
Thank you. Next is a report from the Sister City Committee, Councilmember Trent.
Do you have it? I have it too. I have it. I think we decided, at the meeting, we decided I'd take notes. So the Sister City Committee was on 2/26, our next meeting is on 4/1. We haven't met, I think, since, it's been a while. So we spent most of the time deciding what this year was gonna look like, who we were gonna have as presenters, what our goals would be. And we also spent a lot of time talking about getting youth more involved in some of these boards and we're gonna have, they have, Rochester Hills has a really strong youth council. So they're gonna come and speak to us about what they're doing and we're gonna see how we incorporate them more into some of the other commissions and boards. And we talked about the Memorial Day Parade. Should I talk about that for a second anyway? Okay, because we had our first Memorial Day Parade meeting. And so this year, they're not gonna ask for any funding from anyone because last year was canceled because of rain. So they already have all their funding ready to go, sponsorships, all that good stuff. They did state, this was probably the largest thing we talked about, is a chamber will not be doing again after this year. They are done sponsoring and we're doing all the labor behind, that they have to cut back on some of the things they're doing. There's just not enough resources in the Labor Department. I think that's it, right?
Yeah.
The date, of course, is Memorial Day. It's gonna be done like it's done in the past where, well, actually, new in the past, last year was the first change.
Oh, that's right.
Where they meet at the Avon Cemetery at 8:00 in the morning. We do our event then, then they walk through down to Livernoy and Avon and Rochester Hills. It ends with Rochester Hills ceremony. Is that right? Did I cover it? Okay.
Thank you. Next is a report from SEMCOG, Sister City Manager.
That's the mayor, she hosted that, so. Nick, did you go? Can you whip it off the top of your head?
It was just, pretty much just an updated invite.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll do that next meeting as well.
Yeah.
Uh, report from the Cemetery Committee, Councilmember Jones.
Okay, pretty much our focus right now, besides wanting a new fence, new gates for the cemetery, is the 25th anniversary of our independence as a country. So we're working with DAR and the Historical Commission to put that event together. We did a subcommittee meeting that the city manager attended, as well as a finance person to decide how we're going to finance the fact that we'll be cleaning the headstones and repairing the headstones. We have found the financing to be able to accomplish that. We will work with DAR. We're gonna have an event where we've invited some of the robotics kids and the scouts to come and help us clean the headstones. So that's pretty much what we're doing in the cemetery.
Thank you. Next, a report from the Historical Commission, Councilmember Sage.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Friendly reminder, Sunday, March 23rd, from 2:00 to 4:00 PM, is Founder's Day. And we'll be conducting that presentation at the CAF barn at the Rochester Hills Museum at Van Hesen Farm. We saw a preview from Carol Egbo at the last Historical Commission meeting regarding the indigenous people in this area. It is fascinating. I would highly recommend everyone attend. Rochester Community Schools distributed the coloring books in this town, our historical coloring books, to all the second graders in the system. That was 1,142 books. It included those schools, plus St. Andrews, St. John and Oak Harbor.
I didn't say the date, though, so I'm glad you have the date.
Yes. The aforementioned cemetery headstone cleaning will, that event will be held on May 10th from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. And the Rochester Robotics Team, the Feds, the Falcon Engineering Design Solutions, that's the name of that group, and the Scouts will be conducting that event. And then lastly, on Greater Rochester Heritage Days, I know we have a reprieve this year, but we have gotten indication now from Dinosaur Hill Nature Preserve that they are not willing to lead the project anymore, nor will they provide any funding. So I think we need to take a step back and figure out how we're gonna reimagine this festival.
Very good. And I'd just like to say, I might have said this before, Carol Egbo, former Waterford Mod history teacher, will do a great job at the, at the.
Founder's Day.
Founder's Day.
Awesome. Oh, you know her.
I know her. And she used to be, and then she was the head of history for the entire district in Waterford and has done a lot of stuff in Pontiac with the remains and.
Oh, my gosh.
Digs and stuff like that. So it should be interesting. Next is a report from the Planning Commission, Councilmember Hauser.
Planning Commission, we continued our discussion concerning the implementation of various zoning districts. Part of our overall updating to our zoning ordinances, it was a very productive and well-attended meeting by several members of our community. At the end of the meeting, the Planning Commission moved to adopt changes and send them forward to City Council for review, comments and implementation. And I'm happy to report to all my colleagues that we are still on track with the schedule that we had discussed back in January. So the implementation of those zoning changes are still consistent with the milestone dates that we had set. The next April, I'm sorry, the next Planning Commission meeting is set for April 7th, 2025. And again, there were several members from the community here. It's always nice to have a well-attended and, you know, comments made up at the lecture. So if you're around and you want to come and learn more about zoning, April 7th, 2025.
Very good, thank you. Next, a report from the Principal Shopping District, Councilmember Jones, kinda went through that pretty much.
Yeah, I think the only thing I, I thought this was kind, well, there's a couple of events. DEC Art happens May 15th and 16th. The Makers Mark applications are being taken now, the event is on June 21st. But I thought what was interesting, one of the things we spoke about, is that they are putting more meat on their art plans. And so there's a city-wide art plan that they're putting together. They already had a, a kind of a subcommittee, but they're making it more robust. They want to have more consistency and depth. And we even talked about, like, the case of the skate park where we're looking at what we're gonna do for design there, maybe tie it into what the art plan is for the whole city. So it's really exciting. And they kind of talked about how much art we already have in the city that's already here and how can they build around that. That's it. A lot of talk about the assessments. That was a big chunk of the meeting, so.
Councilmember Seig.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. So during our PSD renewal discussion tonight, a request was made for the PSD to provide us a budget look at both with the increase and without. So I see on the agenda, there was a proposed 2026 budget reviewed. Is that readily available to us?
We didn't go through the budget. Are you talking about at the PSD?
Yeah, it's on the agenda.
No, all we did was talk about the assessment, right?
No, no, we crashed through the budget because it, it was pretty static. So, but we, so we can get that.
Well, I left after an hour or so.
Oh, you're, you're right. It was, you're right, it was after that.
So the 2026.
We can get you that.
Did the 2026 budget then include the increase?
The both ways.
Well, so that information is readily available. So could we get that? That'd be great.
I think she's.
Answer is yes.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Good question.
Okay. A report from the OPC, that's me. We had the audit presented and the audit's in excellent shape. Our fund balance is extremely high, which is good. And also, the OPC is not allowed to bond, so any major projects or repairs would have to come from the fund balance, so that is one reason to keep the fund balance high. Had a special license approval for some events that have alcohol, believe it or not, there's alcohol at the OPC. Um, and then a code of conduct revision where, believe it or not, we have a code and they need a code of conduct, you know, if there's people, there's issues. But they took out some of the things that were, like, COVID-related, um, that seemed, you know, you have to keep this distance from people and stuff. So we decided to take that out. You know, I guess you can always put them back in and heaven forbid. Um, and that was that. Uh, council member King.
Um, regarding the OPC, that is, it's funded by millage, correct? And then, um, is there, are there savings plans to accrue funds for large capital projects? Like, how would that, or would they come to?
That would come out of the general fund.
They'd come to each community?
Correct. Well, well, no, they have a general fund now that they've been able to.
Oh, their general fund? Okay.
So the general fund is, like, $6 million now, let's say. So in, in theory, they can't do any project more than $6 million. I mean, I guess in theory, if there was, you know, some horrific thing, they'd have to come for an assessment, like, of some kind. But, um, they've done a lot of projects, you know, in the last few years. So they're in pretty good shape. So, yeah, I think they have the same minimum 25% balance that we do and they're like 90%. Okay, any further comments? Is there any public comment out there? Brian, anything? Doesn't look like it.
Thank you. I've not seen any.
Joellen? Just kidding. Um, okay, on to General Miscellaneous, Mr. City Manager.
Yes, thank you. Just a couple of things. Mayor, somebody beat you to the punch. They called about the tennis court nets. So usually, um, Stuart's the first one to ask us, so I just want to let you know, somebody asked and soon as we can get them in there, we're going to get them in there. It's, there's still frost in the ground, so I, we let them know that it'll be a little bit, probably about two or three weeks. So.
Two, two or three weeks. The nets are up at the high schools.
Remember, we have that underground water system, so we'll, we'll try. As soon as we can, we'll get it. Um, we met today, Carrie and I, met as a follow-up with the tree committee's, uh, microforest planning. So we went to the details of it today. So April 22nd, which is Arbor Day, which is also our, um, it's Earth Day. So we're going to plant the mother tree, the first tree at the microforest at the community garden. So Carrie and I went over the whole planting plan today. Spent a couple hours. It's pretty exciting. So, um, then May 3rd will be the volunteers will come in and help us plant that day. So have it all wrapped up. So that's pretty exciting. Then last, I'd like to introduce, Jason, you want to come up for a minute? Jason Warner is our new citywide project manager. He's already probably made a salary in what he's done organizing everything for us. And he's jumped in with both feet. He's a resident in Great Oaks. He's been a volunteer fire department, uh, fire, um, men. Um, and raising his family here, his kids in school, et cetera. So he's been a unbelievably positive influence on our team. Um, he's helping every department all across the board. He's extremely organized human. Spreadsheets, you'll get, like, we get the, um, Chief George is unbelievable at reporting, parking stuff, and statistics. That's what Jason does too. So we're starting to see him and I are working on gussying it up a little bit. It's, uh, a monthly spreadsheet that you'll see of what the statuses of every project we're working on in the community. He's all over the grant process, making sure we don't miss any milestones there. So, so happy to have him on board and, um, maybe Jayce, just a little bit about you. I kind of thumped on you there a little bit, but.
Yeah, I think you described me better than I can describe myself. So, um, yeah, thanks for having me. I'm excited to be here and to, to work with you all. So, um, like our city manager said, um, I've been a resident in Rochester for 10 years this summer. Um, I've worked for the fire department for about eight years. Um, I have two kids in the, the schools here. And, um, being a, being a resident and working with, you know, in the local area is extra special to me.
In your background, just tell them where you're at Oakland County.
Yeah, so, um, I worked for Oakland County for 21 years. Um, I started when I was in, um, college in my undergrad. And, um, most currently, I was the manager of facilities, planning, and engineering. Um, so I've worked in facilities management for over two decades. Um, anything from signs on the walls through, um, brand-new buildings and new construction, so.
Welcome.
Welcome. Yeah, good to see. Good to have project manager. Yeah.
That's it. Um, Madam Clerk.
Uh, yes, your honor, just to let, uh, council members know, um, there's no change in petitions going out or petitions coming in. Um, still a lot of time. And at the next meeting, um, I plan to have the agenda item for permanent consolidation of the six precincts down to three. And then a second, um, item to propose moving a couple of the polling locations. So we will talk about that.
Yeah, I saw Rochester Hills is shutting all kinds of precincts.
Really?
To save money. To pay for their sheriff thing, as they said.
The law changed to allow a higher amount of registered voters per precinct. So it went from 2,999 up to 4,999. So that's, that's why they'll all fit within that. So they're, they're probably taking advantage of it as well.
Mr. City Attorney?
Uh, nothing, thank you.
Council member King?
Um, a couple of quick things. Um, Raya didn't meet recently, but I did have a conversation with David, um, Ward, who is the director of Raya. Um, there was some talk of potentially coming in front of city council to request a millage for Raya. Due to the fact that Rochester, the Rochester Hills millage, um, expires and they need to renew that this year. My understanding as of now is that they're planning to renew it flat to where they're at. So we wouldn't see an increase. Um, but you do, but we did see a little bit of an increase because we realized there was an error in the calculation. I think Anthony talked about that during the last budgeting meeting. Um, right now, you know, the discussions we've had during budgeting around the millages, we have already reflected those, those items already reflected in our budgets. And I think the view from council has been able, with, been to maintain those in the budgets. And I think we have a balanced budget that continues to do that. I shared that information with him. So I think at this time that he's not planning to come to the city to ask for a millage, that they would continue to keep it, um, in the budget so long as the council is, um, you know, comfortable with that.
And if I may, so, um, we've had an internal discussion with Tom Colas, who's our bond counsel. And they went over, we spent two hours last Friday, Marcy, him and I, and Jason, and we talked about what we can bond for. And Raya is not eligible. They, we couldn't even do that if we wanted to. David doesn't know that. But literally, we just got legal opinion. There's a bunch of laws, I'm sorry, a bunch of, um, judicial decisions lately. And it really defined things you can do, like, we can't do police, we can't do fire, we can't do a Raya. There's certain things we can't do that way. But we can continue our relationship with them. So we weren't ready to talk to him yet, but we will.
For a millage or bond?
Millage.
Oh, millage. Okay, well then.
Is there any, Mr. City Manager, anything new with the library negotiations?
Yeah, actually, yes. So we went, um, Anthony and I met with the Oakland County, I'm sorry, Oakland Township Library Board requested a meeting with us and them and Juliana, um, and their board chair. So we had a couple-hour meeting, uh, last Thursday, I believe, is, is awesome. Uh, we, well, the end result was the library board had intended to try to make everybody the same. And once we got done with that conversation, it was very clear to them that we're each unique, how we handle it, what our services are, what you get credit for, what you don't get credit for. So it was really cool to watch the chairman of the library board, our library board, kind of back down like, oh, now I get it. So one size doesn't fit all. And talking to the Oakland County.
Our library board, we don't, we're not.
Not our library. They're, Rochester Hills Library Board, yeah, sorry. I, to me, they're at that building. So we talked about land, Oakland Township's library board obviously flipped the, at the community outlet breakfast, their supervisor said what she wanted to say, totally against what the whole meeting was about. Um, so they have two different attitudes. Their administration is against the board. Board's very pro-library to work through. So I thought it was great. Anthony and I threw our proposal out there, which would, that they accepted something like the 4%, remember that? Gone. They, they're really open to treating us different than everybody else. And so I think we're in a good place. We'll be back in a couple of weeks to give you the final answer. They're, they're mulling over now. So really productive meeting. I was very happy.
Very good. Thank you.
Sorry, it's a little.
Council member King?
Um, we also, I don't know, Marilyn or Christian, you want to comment on it, but we did have a very robust meeting with the CAT committee today. So I thought I'd just provide a.
You do that.
A brief update. I think it was a, I think it was a good discussion, necessary discussion. Um, we're very lucky to have, um, two experts in the field helping us from different nonprofits with the actual trap neuter and, and release part of it and education. So we're working on a multifaceted approach. As many of you know, we tackled the Greg Street area last year, made really significant process. We had progress. We had to put a pause on it because of the weather. It would be inhumane to trap cats and leave them freezing, you know, potentially to die in a, in a cage, um, through the winter. So we are ramping up. We have, I think, 10 appointments scheduled for neuter, spay and neuter for the end of the month. So we will be back out starting to trap. Um, you know, in the next couple of weeks, really focusing on the Taylor-Castel Fourth Street area. That seems to be, um, one of the next, uh, big areas. There is one additional colony. I forget where.
Charles and Williams.
Charles and Williams. Okay. So there's a third colony that's been identified as well. But I think Castel seems to be, um, or Taylor seems to be the biggest, um, one as of now. So we're going out hopefully trying to get ahead of the, the spring kitten litters. There were over, I think, 22 kittens, um, that had been, um, caught, neutered, um, 17 of which were adopted out. There's still some being held within the rescue that they're looking for homes for. Um, a couple of adult cats as well. I think there were additional eight that had been returned to the Greg Street area. Um, I think, you know, my perspective from being in that area, it's, it's gone well. Haven't heard from others in the community of, of continuing issues. Um, they say that by, by neutering them, it helps to kind of curb some of the bad behaviors. Um, so, you know, still are in the process. This was kind of like a pilot. So, um, we'll see if that continues. But the next area of focus will be Taylor as well as education. Um, and then we're also talking about coming back and to council with an ordinance around ground feeding as well as potentially, um, an ordinance, uh, that would mandate that, um, pets be spayed or neutered or you apply for a license for breeding, should that be your intent. Um, because this is not a, an accidental thing that happens. This is, you know, kind of irresponsibility, people letting their cats get out who are not, um, you know, fixed. And, and it becomes a problem for the community. So that's update.
Sounds good, I think. Council member Sage?
Uh, nothing this evening.
Council member Jones?
A couple of things. Um, we had our first virtual meeting with Fawn Ranch, um, about the skate park. And we went over all the details, uh, very, very detailed. They have done this many, many times. And, um, they're going to give us a starting design. And then we will, um, set up a meeting with the community and they will fine-tune it with the community input. Um, we got, uh, we received Nancy, uh, applied for grant and received 70, $7,500 from the Greater Metropolitan Association of Realtors that we will use at the skate park for benches and some covered area and such. Um, we are going on, I am going to go now, I believe, on a field trip. And which park are we going to?
Northville.
Northville. We're going to go visit Northville and meet with the people there about, um, this same company did their skateboard park. So we're going to get some more ideas about how that all rolled out.
There's room, we, or Jason got us a bus from OPC. So if anybody would like to join us from 10 till probably 1, it's, it's about an hour to get there. This one's.
I already talked about the Rewald Parade. Okay, I am sitting on two, uh, committees through RCS. One is the RCS Wellness Committee. Um, the state mandates that every school district has a wellness policy. So we are working on that. Um, I am on the subcommittee that is called Community and City Connections. And, um, we've met three times. We have another meeting this week. And one thing we know for sure is we're going to do a health and wellness fair on May 3rd at Rochester High School. Um, I also sit on the advisory committee for the master property planning, um, for RCS. We have a total of five meetings. There's 75, three members of this advisory committee. And, um, decisions are being made about all the facilities and all the buildings, uh, that RCS owns and how many classrooms and future, um, population growth trends and where are they headed with all of this. So it's super exciting, lots of data. They hired Plant Moran. They've been amazing. Um, and then the final thing is our new Lions Park that the Rewald family built, uh, shelter over, um, is going to have six concerts. Uh, Raya is sponsoring the concerts. And the first one's on June 12th. So there's four Thursdays and two Saturdays. The last one's on, um, August 28th. So that's way exciting to see that all come to fruition. And now there'll be events there. So very exciting. That's it? Great.
Thank you. Council member Trent?
Nothing.
Council member Hauser.
Nothing. You got nothing to say.
Very, very thing. So, um, similar to the CAT committee, we had a, uh, Blight committee sub-meeting today. And I think it went very, very well. Um, as my colleagues will recall, back in the fall, we presented a proposed ordinance, uh, some modifications to the existing Blight ordinance. And that's when the committee was, was formed. We met, uh, last, maybe November, December, made some comments, um, got some input from the, the stakeholders. And city attorney made some changes. We went through those changes today. It sounds like the subcommittee was all in favor of those changes. And so, um, conceptually, what would happen is that revised and, and proposed amendments to that Blight ordinance would come to full city council at the next meeting, uh, for, for discussion and, and hopefully, uh, first reading. So that'll take place. So it was a very good meeting and I think we're, we, we did a really good job. And, and I'll let Chief and Jamie talk about it, uh, at the next meeting. But I think they're happy and they feel that there's some, some changes and, and upgrades to that, um, ordinance that will help them. And then secondly, be prepared for the most incredible, robust OPEB update that you've ever had in your life at the next meeting. Okay? So we'll get back on that.
Cannot wait.
That's it.
I assume the stock market will be up by the time, yes. Let's all hope so. Um, I don't have anything tonight, so thank you, everybody, for coming. Enjoy the nice weather this week. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.